...$2,985 recycling commodity collected the amount of $635 for the month of July. Municipal court's office collected receipts of the amount of $1,122.74. Department of Community Development for the month of July, June, collected receipts in the amount of $81,047.63. For the month of July, they collected receipts in the amount of $100,985.75. And municipal court for the month of July collected receipts in the amount of $22,948.75. Motion to accept the report of stress.
Second.
On their side.
I have number 21, motion to approve township meeting minutes of July 9, 2015.
Forward.
On favor?
Aye.
I have number 22, motion to approve co-opus meeting minutes of July 9, 2015.
Forward.
On favor?
Aye.
I have number 23, motion to approve membership in Lenoka Harbor Fire Company for Thomas Manado.
Forward.
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Yes, I have one add-on. It's Resolution 220. The Resolution Township, Lacey County, Bushes State, where they authorized receipt of bids for the rest of the John Deere loaders for the 2015 leaf collection program and the 2015-16 snow collection, snow removal program.
Can I motion? Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Ferretolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor President?
Yes.
That's all I have today.
Okay, comments from the committee. Yes, sir. No brief comments tonight. It's a large house. I know a lot of people won't have a chance to the microphone. I want to welcome everyone as well. So some of my comments, some of what we've been looking at collectively as a committee. First, one of the comments. In accordance with Nuclear Regulatory Commission regulations, in the recent past, there was an emergency prep drill at the plant involving New Jersey State Police, FBI, Lacey Township, Police Department, FEMA. And without going into the particulars, suffice it to say that there is no shortage of academic capital and experience, regulation down there at the plant protecting us, looking out for us, and if necessary firepower. So we are well set with our emergency protection of people, state and federal, local enforcement and regulatory operations. To that end, we've all been contacted or been in contact with Congressman McArthur. Congressman McArthur was good enough to, Tom McArthur had come here last August fourth and went to have a coffee with the congressman right behind this building in our rec building. I can see personally, you know, I've met Congressman McArthur several times now. His staff reaches out to us, his staff emails, discovering the body. We were, to the best of my recollection, the first municipality to publicly endorse him and get behind him. And as we move forward and attempting to finally attend the plant, I know that he's going to be there to support us. And we have those assurances already. Our deputy mayor, our mayor, all of us are just, we're working towards that end. So things are moving, things are progressing, and to have support from Washington, I do think is important because we do need that. Congressman McArthur's a man that we can count on, and he will be there for us. He has been there for us. As we went on, I want to wish happy 75th to Lenoka Harbor Fire Department. They had their event last Saturday, August 1st. Also, quick mention of Pastor Applegate and her efforts in the community through the municipal lines, without the municipal lines, with the Sandy victims, how they had food and clothing. I mean, he goes on and on. I guess you could call it fortunate enough to get dumped by some people, especially that man to my left here for charity in the baseball dunk tank, but it was for a good cause and, like I said in the reporter, I won't know. So also want to remind everyone about Lacey Day tomorrow. A wonderful time. I apologize and thank you. And that's where we have Veronica, she's always looking after us.
Still want people showing up tomorrow?
Yes, we don't want people showing up tomorrow, so thank you. Yes, it is sad. The weather's supposed to be beautiful. Young, seasoned citizens, welcome to all. I mean, it's a fabulous time. Bring the kids. That's all. Thanks so much.
Same basic thing that the Committee McCarty told us. I'd like to, Lenoka Harbor Firehouse, the 75th anniversary, it turned out to be great. It was a fantastic day. All the volunteers, they were honored there and as we should, and it was a good showing by everybody, which was nice. Also with the Lacey Methodist Church, we were down there. It was a great day for the food truck event. We seen a lot of people down there, and I wanted to thank all the volunteers for that too. Yes, Committee McCarty told us in the dump tank, and there was a lot of people dunking them, and I spent some of my money there to make sure that he got dumped, I think 28 times, but that was good. It was a good time.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it was.
Did you have that water tested, Pete?
It was dark brown and brackish. I had to ask you.
Same on Saturday, Lacey Day. Everybody should come out and enjoy the day. We have a lot to be proud of here in Lacey, all our volunteers and everything that goes on in Lacey, so I'd like to see a good showing for that, which it usually always is. A lot of people ask about Hebrew Park, what is going on down there. Yeah, the pad is being made for exercise equipment, which Jim got some thing that was donated by a company, so we can get it down there. Casey's down there getting it all ready. He's going to handle it, and that's what that's going to be down there, so everybody knows. The Cedar Drive paving project's going to be starting next week, maybe toward the end of next week, as Casey Parker told me, or probably maybe the later part of the following week, but they will be starting on that. Other than that, I just wanted to wish all the students going back to college good luck and just have fun with what they're doing. The only reason, personally, I brought it up, my daughter's going into her junior year, so, and she was a graduate of Lacey High School, so she's her third year at Paulville University, and I'm real proud of her, personally. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just blow it to the very important fact, let everybody know that even though we only meet once a month, we spend a lot of time around the town, meeting different groups and organizations and going over their needs and different ways of supporting them. This is a part-time job, but we do spend a lot of time outside the venue, trying to figure out different ways of, we're going to support services, and we spend a lot of time going over billing with different contractors that are involved in the town, so we really take this stuff very seriously and spend a lot of time on it outside of town. That's all I have. What comments do you have?
And I'm going to be very brief with the, I want to talk about, you know, with the Methodist Church, food truck thing, Firehouse, they have a great event throughout the town, but, you know, it's all made up because of the volunteers, that's what it's all about, the volunteers we have here. But I just wanted, you know, as everyone said, talk about Lacey Day. If you're new to town and haven't been to Lacey before, you've been to town a couple years and a half, come up to the park on Saturday. It's going to be going on, starts at 12 o'clock and then ends at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It's an opportunity to get out there and meet all of our emergency service squads, all of our different civic groups in town. If you want to get involved in a group in town, you won't be here. We have a lot of good kids in the schools that are going to be there, there'll be a lot of programming stuff today. And Rotary Club is there for the entire afternoon. They donate all the food, all the food is donated, it was cooked by the Rotarians in town, and it's a real nice opportunity, you know, to get to know a little bit more about Lacey, what Lacey's all about. The four of us will be there, probably enjoying ourselves, and we'll have Veronica getting a Rotary stamp, which is more important, so come on out and spend the afternoon with us. Something to enjoy. I'm going to cut my comments there, but I'm happy to see you all here tonight, but I think you're all going to have questions, so I guess I'll be talking for a while. With that, I'll open the floor up off the comment. Anybody who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Barry, come back.
Just give him a minute.
Barry Bender, just start by adding, just wanted to comment on something that I brought up last meeting, and I expected to hear something from Mr. Caratolo, or Committee of Caratolo this time. The, I understand that the Animal Control Officer came to your last meeting, and things were moving forward with the tethering law, wondered status.
So we're working on getting a copy of the top records and Tom's orders, so we can develop that. Seems to be those ordinance seem to be the ones that suit the needs of our residents here in Lacey Township, based on the recommendation from our Animal Control Officer and the local board of health members. So once we have that and we develop the ordinance and massage it to our needs, we'll be adopting it.
Point of view. Thank you very much.
Barry, if I could, Mr. Dycov, we did have our meeting, we meet once a month. We had our meeting last night at this time in that back room. The comments were positive. I gave my word that there would be some type of ordinance, and I believe that that's going to happen, and I think it'll happen by the fall. And we're just working out the work, you know. When you go for an ordinance, there has to be time, there's to be, by the law, we have that public comment period, but we're working on this.
Two meetings?
Right. And there was nothing whatsoever to the negative last night.
Right.
All positive.
That's good.
And I'd be shocked if anything different, I was there. So yes, I should have mentioned something, and I'm glad you came up and reminded me.
So there is lighting.
Absolutely. Keep going.
And then just to remind people, dogs are not tables and chairs, they're living creatures and they need to be treated as live creatures. Thank you.
Thank you. I struggle.
Bill Moss, this game drive for the River Beach. I'd like to, for the people in the audience and all the people at home, on the bill this month for $10,779,046.25, Township has sent in a check to the county for $3,876,228. They sent in another check to the school system for $3,536,302. That leaves the township with their bill of $3,366,565. Now I'd like to talk a little bit, if I may, about the taxes that we just went through. I'd like the people to know that the new tax rate in Lacey is a $1.94.4. Out of that tax rate, for every $100, you pay $30, $30.8 cents to the township, that's this unit right here. You pay $0.41.5 to Ocean County. You pay a dollar 22 for the school system. Last year, you paid a dollar six to the school system. This year, it's 15.5 cents more. That is where most of your money is going. Last year, you paid 37.4 cents to the county. This year, you're paying 4.1, oh, I'm sorry, 41.5 cents. That's 4.1 cents more to the county. The township last year was 28 cents, it's now 30.8. You paid 2.8 cents more to the township. Your money is going to the school system. Just for information, the municipal taxes are $11,617, that's $616,835. We also pay the county, $15,687,162.37. We pay our schools, $26,110,638. Now, as you know, our school system, we have the highest paid business manager in Ocean County, $205,000 a year. People a lot of complain about their taxes, and I realize that I guess a lot do. You're in the wrong place tonight, you should be at your school board meeting next Tuesday. It's always on a Monday, but for some reason, they changed it to Tuesday. I want to let you know a couple of other things. Lacey Township is on 15.5 cents. That's because you've got a D-rated school in the system. Manchester went up 3.6 cents. Jackson went up 3.6 cents. But we all of a sudden go up 15.5 cents on our tax rate. They're talking about a bond system with the solar panels where they borrowed $19 million for an $11 million job, and it's costing us millions and millions more. We wonder why your tax rate go up. They almost went up that same amount last year for the school system. The year before that, they went almost 8 cents if one shot. I want you to know, ladies and gentlemen, there's 33 towns in Lacey Township. For your county rate, there's 29 towns that pay more to the county than we do. There's six towns that pay less than we do. Your school district, there are five towns out of 33 that pay more in school systems. That means that there's 27 towns that pay less to their school systems than we do here in Lacey. Your tax rate, there are 21 towns out of the 33 towns in Ocean County that pay a higher tax rate than Lacey. There's 11 towns that pay a lower tax rate than Lacey. Your tax rate is a $1.94.4 for every $100 of your tax rate. I ask these people, I want the people to try and understand, I already told you what you get from your school system, it's not your teachers, your teachers are fine, there's other problems in the school system that have to be solved. If you go back two years, you'll see that most of your, four out of seven of your school board members are not there anymore. Two more are not going to be there this year. They've got one left. Everybody's expecting the one person that went in there by herself to do everything, not when they're holding it back on her, not when she can't get things from the school system that doesn't work. Y'all realize what you get from Lacey Township. Look around. Look around good before you complain, because these are the people you give the less amount of money to. You've got a police department complete, you've got City Hall, this City Hall and all the people that run it for you. You've got a Public Works Department. Look at what your Public Works do. Over 100, you are 100 acres of grass, plowed in just the city. You've got seven parks, the best park to have anybody around. People from other towns come to our town for our parks, and people, some of the people in the town don't want the parks, even though we got the best. You have a recycling center drop-off, mall pickup. You've got maintenance of all your parks. You've got public beaches that maintain and clean, you've got lifeguarding on those beaches, you've got leaf pickup twice a year, snow removal, 165 miles of streets in Lacey Township, 27 miles of county streets in Lacey Township. You've got a free rabies clinic, you've got Christmas parade, you've got, you've got emergency management, you've got fire protection in Danbury Lake, Lenoka Harbor, Lacey. They pay for, the township pays for all that equipment, and yes, they're all volunteers, so. You've got First Aid Squad, DMS, animal control, help, zone, planning boards, inspector, administrators. So many things that you get from your township which you give the lowest amount of money to. If you want to complain about your taxes, anybody, go to the school system. Let them know you're tired of paying these high taxes, because they're the ones that are increasing it double figures on you, that are costing people an arm and a leg to live here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm David Frum, one of Lenoka Harbor's five title drives, Lenoka Harbor.
Mr. Mayor, ladies, members of council, it is such a joy to come in here and see so many people here. I don't mind standing in the back at all. I mean, this is great, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
With that being said, Bill Moss hit it 125%, and he took the wind out of me, but that's okay, because I'm very thankful for that. Thank you for coming up there. What I really would like to say is, as Bill stated, this township, from the mayor to this council, and Veronica, and Casey Parker, they have run this town beautifully. And I can tell you that, and I've been here since 1980, when Fox Hollow was built, and I have many family members in this town. Some, two of them are on the school system, one is the principal, and they're all good people, not just because they're related. And the school beaches are very good also. But what I have a problem with is not this township committed. They do a wonderful job, there's no doubt about it. If you go on lacyreporter.com, Gavin Ross's website, you will see every issue in this town, and you will see exactly what I'm talking about, what Bill Moss is saying. The problem in this town right now, and why your taxes went up, is because of the top-heavy administration in the school board system. Mr. Savich, who's the board, back, the board of business manager, he is making $199,000 buck, which I approve down the road. In mid-July, he just got a 5% raise, he's going up to about $206,000, $207,000. I have a problem with that, okay? And if you go on lacyreporter.com, you will see what everybody else in Ocean County and around is making. With that being said, there are also, they've hired these top-level people, and I'm sorry, but I have a problem. If I want to stay here and live in this beautiful town, I am not going to let them ruin it. And that's why I have come out and I backed the mayor in his past election, and we see that time and time again, after this last couple of years, all these board members are going out the door. I'm telling you, the next meeting is being canceled on the 17th, it's going to be August 18th at, I think, 7:30. I don't know, Regina's at the center, am I correct? Oh, Regina's here, okay, great.
Where is this meeting?
Is over on Dean's, over at the school.
High school.
At the high school, yes. And that's where the anger should be, not here. I'm being honest, because, I will give you this, between now and that meeting, go on lacyreporter.com, go through everything in there, go through all the headlines, and you'll see what we are talking about. We are bringing it to light. Thanks to Gavin Rossi over there, who runs the website. I want to thank you, Gavin, for everything you did. And with that being said, I don't want to take everybody else's time, but I want to just thank you all for coming, and I hope you're there August 18th. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the committee, ladies, you do a wonderful job. Mark, everybody, Steve, Veronica, Gary, Lauren, Nick, and Pete, and I back these people 100%. I put up all my signs and I get them out throughout the town, year after year, because that zooms good job, but we need to get the school board changed. That's where it's got to be. Thank you, and have a nice day. Thank you.
Regina, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for a change.
Just let her, Regina, there you go next, I'm sorry.
Regina, the sense of sunset drives sunrise beach. I have a question, and could someone please explain the corrective action plan to the 2014 order that was an open-ended item briefly?
The corrective action plan is, based on some changes with Gatsby 45, you're to do an analysis with regards to your health benefit cost for the future, and that was going to run us $15,000 to do that analysis, and since we changed into the state health benefits, and the state health benefits automatically does that force, we didn't think it was cost-effective to spend $15,000 to tell us what the future costs of our health benefits are going to be, so we chose not to do that.
And that's what the question asked.
Yes, yes, we enrolled back into the state health benefits, and they do it automatically for all the enrollees throughout the state, which would also be done for the fourth education as well.
Thank you very much for explaining that, because there's nothing in the resolution to tell us what it's about. I'm here to thank you for the tax increase, but we could also, you know, have a course of ordeal, my next donation is to put the house up for sale in a minute, pick up the tax bill, I would be disappointed with that. And I was at a town when the tax bill arrived, but boy, oh, boy, my phone was ringing, the most tax bills came out. And I think I can safely say, I'm the only public official in this room that said no to a recent budget. You know, to come to time, you have to use this two-letter word called no. It's still in the dictionary list, I checked.
Let me just correct one thing, you're the only public official in this room that said no to a budget because you're a school, she's a school board member, not our budget.
No, not you.
Just sort of confused, and I, you know.
That's all right, I'm just, hey, I know how to use the word no, I'm not afraid to use it. I want to extend a cordial invitation to everyone here to please come to the next school board meeting, Tuesday night, August 18th, 7:30, in the Lacey High School Lecture Hall, which is the building to the far right-hand side with the Paulville front. Thank you.
Thank you, James, thank you. Second. You didn't even try.
Charles Porter, 604 Franklin Court. Two years ago, I came for the committee to discuss and bring to your attention that we're residents in the Channel Point Developments having some shawling issues along borderways and lagoon systems. We've been working hard, trying to get the attention of the committee, with local government law, and trying to get some state and government law, also the power plant law. What I have here to present to you is 60 signed letters by the residents out there. Also, there is a letter from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, which exposes that back in 2009, the power plant was looking at doing some threat, take care of some shawling problems. To date, that still has not been done. We believe that this is accelerating over time and needs more attention, so we're asking for the committee's help. I believe there's a meeting coming up late in August with Congressman McArthur?
Yeah.
And some more about Mr. McArthur, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we know, we just dug out, you know, we'll support it 100%. I'm not going to be in town that week, but I will have probably Deputy Mayor be at the meeting, representing the body. Just so, to bring you up to speed, we have been responding to this thing. Unfortunately, that dredging is not a project that the township really gets a lot of information.
Tax off, tax off.
Yeah, but even at that, we're kind of an outside player, just like you folks are when it comes to the state. The state is very tight-lipped on what they're going to give us as information goes. We had a meeting, I guess, about eight weeks ago, myself and Community Dykoff, with the land representatives, Veronica, the three of us were there, and that was one of our main issues, what's going on here. This is, this is getting worse. Not only is it the Channel Point development itself, but as you look down the riverfront itself, the shawling is taking and pushing itself out of the area of the channel, and a lot of the properties along that area, they're going to have to vote and bring a vote in there, and, you know, they're putting temporary piers going out into the water, so we're very aware of it. You know, we've been told that there's an agreement and a contract between the Exelon folks and the state of New Jersey, where they're supposed to be dredging within a certain amount, you know, we can't find a copy, but we're trying to press to get a copy of that.
Within this pact, if there's a copy of the letter between the EEP and the Nuclear Regulatory Commission where they state that, I'm sure that they're not stretching anything.
Yeah, without a doubt, but it's something we want, as much as you folks want to know, because it not only interferes with your larger life and your homes, but it interferes with people that you go challenge voting against on various, on regular basis.
Safety first.
Yeah, but we, you know, we, I know, I guess it was about a week ago, I got a call from, I may not always be at the press, but it was late at night, I tried, I called her back, but I never backed her. Then I saw your article on paper, which is very good article. We will participate, we will do whatever we can to pressure on. Senator Connors and, you know, Senator Fundman and Bo were very good, and they have worked here to the state, the DPD, the National Assembly. EEP is very, very difficult, but we're having the same problems of committings that we're trying to do for our entries and for our waterfront properties that will today. We actually secured a permit to face side beach this year, and Army Corps turned around and said, well, guess what, actually, I'm going to, I haven't issued a permit yet. So it's, government regulations, unbelievable. I'd be happy to take that, you know, like I said, we will participate in the meeting.
Thank you.
If we can get around to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Nick Spaulter, 25, Danbury Drive, Seabreeze Community, and also a member of what we call our tax committee in Seabreeze, representing many of the good people of the community. And not everyone's here, we have about, currently, right now, about 348 people, all registered people. So, you know, two things here, I mean, we moved to this area, we were attracted to Seabreeze, and one of the compelling reasons to act for me was the favorable taxes here. And frankly, coming from Monmouth County, your, you know, tax rate was good. Unfortunately, today, my taxes are here, are more than I was paying in Monmouth County with the recent reevaluation and reassessment. Let me give you some data here, because right now, you know, we have, Seabreeze is in its infancy, and we've got, you know, as I mentioned, 348 people here, 174 closed homes, 568 homes at, you know, full build-out. The contributions in taxes, in today's taxes, is over $5.7 million at full build-out. Right now, we're about $1,300,000 in taxes, and we contribute about $850,000 to local GDP. At full build-out, that number's eight and a half million, and by the way, it's a conservative number, shopping, food shopping, chairman of the legislature probably gets a good share of it. So, you know, we, you know, and it's a nice community, you know, we all love it here, we're all, you know, attracted to the area. So, having said that, and of course, being an active adult community, a 55-plus community, we have zero impact on the schools, but we're providing this huge societal benefit, 63% of that number, the aforementioned number, to the school. We're not happy about it. You know, we're not happy about paying these taxes, most people are retired, most people are professionals, retired professionals, from as far away as New York, upstate New York, New York City, you know, Bergen County, Longwood, Jersey. So, and we have people here who are also have a lot of time, we have a couple of talented people here with spreadsheets. I know one of our, one of our residents has requested the budget from the school board and has been talking and communicating with the administrators. I know one of our residents has requested the budget from the school board, and has been talking and communicating with the administrators, questioning all these items. So you can rest assured that, you know, we're very active people, we will be very active, and we will, you know, we'll attend the school board. So, one of the things I want to express my displeasure about is the tax assessment. As you know, February eighteenth, the, you know, Mr. Mayor, Veronica, and Deputy Mayor, we had a meeting here. Our tax committee came over, and we told, you know, about our plight, you know. Our, you know, deed prices are, you know, one thing in Seabreeze. And Toll Brothers has this, and I'll use the term I used with the commissioner when we had the tax authority, Toll Brothers has a very seductive process of, you know, running up the price of the house. So my house, for example, three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar base price, you know, we get to five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, because, you know, bringing your wife to a design center is not a good idea. Everybody here is special in a design center, okay? And, you know, and you have, you have a lot of options here. But those options, you know, these inflated prices, you know, you pay twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars for landscaping, patio, things like that, these are not items that we would normally assess for. In fact, we could have done it post-closing, and it wouldn't have been part of the deed. But, you know, we have these inflated prices, so they're high, and they don't represent market value, because we have resales that are going for twenty-five, thirty-five percent less than that person paid for deed price. And, you know, this is a very, very significant issue. So we came, you know, we want to pay our fair share. We came here with a win-win kind of thing, and, you know, we did, we hired an attorney, we hired an appraiser to go in and do, and represent the community as a whole, and we filed for these appeals. One of our frustrations was, was we expected to negotiate this, we expected to have a win-win resolution. And, you know, the tax assessor says, we're not negotiating anything, and I'm going to inspect everybody's house. So we, the assessors came out, inspected everybody's house all over again, we all went through this again, we opened up our homes, we let them back in, and they came back in. So we filed our appeals, and we were greeted with the fact that the assessor goes and crossfiles at the full deed price. I mean, really, come on, guys, this is not a win-win situation here. Not a win-win at all. This is not what we came here for. We've got a real problem with the assessor. Sat here and talked to him, tried to work something out, he don't want to hear nothing. Crossfiles at full deed price, when he knows damn well deed prices are inflated. I'm sure you'll hear from others.
Yeah, let me just start with the, you know, the Toll Brothers know themselves, we really went out as a community and enticed school boards to come to it. We want, you know, most of them down, we want Toll Brothers to go do it for the community. And we recognize going back probably ten years ago, it's probably the best rate all this town's ever seen of an impound.
I think it's, I think we're a cash.
Hands down, it's a great request, actually. Now, going beyond that, you know, we also had a lot of meetings, conversations, and discussions with Toll Brothers on these issues that we talked about exactly. Because, you know, Toll Brothers was aware of the fact that they were going to take the market of these houses, and they were well aware of the fact of how we would assess the houses once they do that. So they chose to go in a different direction to exactly what they did, and unfortunately, it inflated a lot of the contract prices, exactly like you say, for a lot of items that are going to be done outside by separate contractors later on. Having said that, unfortunately, because of the fact that the tax assessor, although he's appointed by the governing body, is in a commoners position, we have very, very little control over anything that gentleman does and that office does. And I, when I told the gentleman when we met that day, the reason for that is legislation is in place, so that people that sit on governing bodies like the five plus, can walk downstairs and say, okay, listen, this is Joe Blough, he's my good friend, you know, we do some assessments. Guidelines are in place to make sure that public is protected. What you were saying, I've heard from people, and I'm not saying that there's not, you know, true proof, you know, going either way, I don't know, because I don't know how the gentleman operates from day to day, I don't know how the appeal went, you know, when the appeals were in there.
We haven't seen the results of those yet.
Yeah.
We expect them any day.
But again, that goes beyond our authority, that goes to the authority of the Board of Taxation and the Commissions where they're sitting at the appeal that day. Now, should it have been negotiated? I know on an individual basis, a lot of times they are. I can't tell you why, you know, what he did, why he did it, or anything along those lines, but we don't have the authority to take and change those assessments once they come out. I, Veronica and I, you know, were looking excited, I have the assessments, you know, for everyone at Toll Brothers, because I, you know, kind of figured you'd come tonight. It's good to see you all, though. We have, you know, seen some of the sales over there are coming in, we've seen a couple of sales in the five fifty, five seventy-five range, so prices are starting to creep back up. But is that, you know, fair to everybody? I can't say this, I can't say this. I mean, our biggest fight right now is trying to get taxes, we're never going to reduce them, but try and get them to let it off. And like a couple of people have said here tonight, we get our portion of the taxes, but that's why we sent out that pie chart along with our tax board this year. We want the public to know where, you know, it's being spent. And we're doing everything we can with our portion of the dollars that we get. Our budget and the lazy tax municipal building actually went down two hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year. We reduced our spending, and we're trying to do everything we can. But I think that there has to be two issues here, number one, the assessments, so two, the assessments come out, and at that point in time, you still have the ability to take a look at that and state, you know, so I'm sure your attorney would probably recommend to you if it's, you know, something that's not favorable to the residents. Number two is trying to have more representation at the school, like Mr. Chen said.
We'll do that.
Yeah, we send you the tax bill, but believe me, we send it out because by law, we have to, but it's not, we get that money back in, and we divvy it out. And one thing, you know, that really led to this year's assessment, which we, you know, weren't happy doing to begin with, we had to do it because of the fact that we've seen so many appeals over the last four or five years since the market crashed in two thousand and ten. We've taken, give back close to half a million dollars on an annual basis to the residents that filed these appeals, and we figured, okay, we've got to go out and reset, we've got to try and get everybody to a hundred percent where the market's going to be where it should be. But unfortunately, over the four years, we've paid back to schools and the county, they've gotten their money, we've paid back to homeowners, so we're paying it out twice out of our own pocket. So this was a terrible thing to have to go through, but it was the only thing to stop the system from, you know, continuing down the wrong road. Our first reassessment was done when market was at the highest point, the other was done when market was at lowest point. So timing didn't work out, but it had to be done. But I recognize you saying with the tax assessor, I can tell you, I will talk to him, but that's more like it, I can't dictate that, I can't, you know, tell him he has to do something.
Well, you, I, because you guys hired him.
We did hire him, his qualifications are outstanding, but, you know. He has qualifications based on his qualifications as a tax assessor. His personality has come from somewhere.
Really works for you.
So he came down from Monmouth County. Guys, just gotta wait till I'll give you the microphone.
I mean, the challenge that you have, I mean, I'm not Toll Brothers, I represent Toll Brothers, I'm a businessman.
Yeah.
If I were Toll Brothers, and, you know, I'm marketing houses down here, and again, this is in its infancy, a hundred and seventy-some odd homes sold out of five hundred and sixty-eight plan.
Right.
You know, the second phase, I mean, I'm Toll Brothers, am I going to go ahead with the second phase? Am I going to sell it to a Lennar, am I going to sell it to somebody else? I mean, you know, they did wind up, you know, selling it to a Lennar, and the second phase could be two hundred thousand dollars. You don't know. But the question is that, again, a compelling reason to act, and people are coming down here, and Toll Brothers, when I first went in with Toll Brothers community, it was in Schuersbury, and I said, well, taxes are too high. Oh, now the Fork River, because we got the same houses down here, and we have a lot of tax. It is a significant compelling reason to act, and I think you've got to recognize the fact that if I was Toll Brothers, I'd look at the impact that this tax increase and the rateables that we're getting hit with are going to have on new home sales. Because I gave that, I think I did diligence, you know, and I met with Veronica, I met with people here, like, before I even signed a contract, what are the taxes like? Where are people paying it out? And it's in order of magnitude higher. I mean, come on, I mean, this is a big increase for retired people. We, you know, again, not to repeat myself, but we have zero impact on the school. We don't mind paying our societal benefit, but, you know, you can't, we have to be fair here, we're, you know, this is a, people that are buying Seabreeze are relatively affluent, it's a very good demographic, and like I said, you know, conservatively, eight and a half million dollar contribution to the local GDP, not to mention, not to mention the tax rate. I mean, we've got to have, I mean, I've seen other communities where, you know, we've, you know, other, in Jackson, I think, an adult community came in, they got taxed again for ten years. I mean, we need some sort of relief here, because it can't, it can't get unless people then sell and devalue the hell out of places. And, you know, the, we already seen, you know, resales that are devalued.
And, yeah, I think we've seen that two years ago, you know, two years ago, we saw that, now it's starting to rebound.
Well, the rebound is, all the resales are rebounded. The resales are rebounding, I mean, yeah.
I think the ones that we have, and, you know, to be, that's a very good reason.
And we have a Realtor, you know, in our community, and he has a number of houses listed, but, I mean, here's a house that was, probably worth over five hundred thousand.
Before you got a little bit of a meeting.
Yeah, you know, over five hundred thousand, and, you know, sold for three eighty-three. You know, I mean, thirty-five percent discount, relatively, both places.
And in the overall picture of things, that's why the reval did as much damage as it did. We lost a cap of a billion dollars in total of assessed value of the township in a revaluation. I mean, that's really the driving force when you look at what happened.
We didn't lose that for months.
Yeah, you did lose that.
No, no, I can say we lost for me, we lost it from the overall market crashing from two thousand and ten on, and the values of people's homes, the values of people's businesses, everything just went down, and we had to take a reval. Now we're at a hundred percent, we're back where we should be, and, but unfortunately, it's created a lot of pain for a lot of people.
I'll let some of the other folks, I know we have people eager to address this as well.
I appreciate your name, Chris Ross, I'll respect that.
Yeah.
I don't want to be better than Mr. Ross or one of these other long-time people. I don't have a problem paying property taxes. I have a problem when I go around at random, and I look at five or six homes that are equal to ours, that are quarter mile outside of this gate.
Yep.
That are assessed for a hundred thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars less than my house, frame house, most of them have doubled or more property. That's my problem. My problem is when I see an assessment for a house that actually is bigger than mine, because I haven't got information from the tax assessor, it's valued at two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and I don't know how the consistency. You reevaluated the town to get a consistency.
Correct.
How do you justify a house that's equal to mine? Is there that much difference between behind that gate and here? I don't know how you can justify that, if the house is equal.
Yeah, gated community certainly carries a little bit more value, but then, you know, if you're talking a hundred and forty thousand dollars, certainly doesn't carry that kind of value, I, you know.
I can show you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like I said, even before I sat down with you gentlemen, or some of you gentlemen here, I have to sit down with you, I just, and I'd be happy to bring the tax assessor into the meeting, but I can't dictate to him what he's going to do. I can't, if you're in the middle of an appeal, I can't have him come into it if the appeal is done.
We have differences in property values, that every lot there is within a hundred square feet, you know, there's a rarity on a corner, but most of them hold the same. We have differences of sixty thousand dollars property value.
On the same, on the same ones?
My lot to my friend's lot to my friend's lot. How do you come up with these, now, how, they're mythical, they're just numbers, that, I don't know how they came up with them. And that's what I'm talking about, how do I look at a property value that my property tax has gone up three thousand dollars by the year? And that's crazy, you know? Now, I don't know how I can look at somebody's property that has three, four times the square footage, that's appraised for two thousand dollars less, more than mine. I don't know how that's possible, so that's what, that's what I want, I want consistency, and we're not yet. And Nick's absolutely right, somewhere down the line, it's going to backfire between, and, oh, the other thing is, when I sat down for a, that first appeal, AORP was an appeal on the holidays, when it first came out, we were set.
That was the reassessment, right?
Yeah, and I sat, I happened to sit down with the head of the appeal company, there was numerous people there, my good fortune, so, him.
Right.
He assured, and I didn't ask this question, he volunteered for me, because I didn't know it was a question to ask, he told me that we do not use builder sales in the assessment process as comp. But obviously, somebody does. Now, is that an arbitrary decision, or is that, is there a rule that they don't, or is it just a rule?
I'm not going to be able to give that answer, because I don't want to take and say something without speaking to Mr. Patrick, to give you the correct answer. I will be happy to take a look into, if you give me the lots you're talking about, I'll look into it.
I could probably give you a hundred, I just don't.
Yeah, I'll look into it from my end, and, you know, keep Mr. Patrick out until your bid process is completed, I'll certainly sit down with you once I've been into this.
As a mayor, it must be frustrating, to be able to do something.
There's only, really, one position that you have no control over, the net.
It's got to be, that can't be totally true, I mean, that has to be something.
We hire.
Yeah, but, I mean, if he exhibits arrogance and ignores us, you know.
Yeah, if this is an issue, unbelievably, it has to go to taxation accountable. We refer it to the net, so we have the ability to say.
All right, okay, thank you.
Tony? If you want to stop, drop this off, what, you know?
Tony Manager, glad you had your eye, perfect timing. Just so you guys know, this committee up here, we reappointed this tax assessor for two more years. Two more years. We just reappointed him, one of the complaints were going through.
He's supported for four years by statutes.
Four years, for four years.
Four years.
They reappointed him, everyone up here said, yes, sir.
Terrific. That's great, good to know about this.
Just here's another thing, too, that you know, I've been in contact with Freehold's Marla, and I challenged him, I asked him to come to a town hall meeting. So I have his own meeting on the reassessment, because I can tell you, headaches after headaches if you watch the meetings. I don't even want to go there. But I tried, I asked about Marla if he would come here, and I would hope that this committee would back me up and have a town hall meeting, and let him hear what's going on. I've been on the phone with him numerous times, and it's been fun. I can't really get into what we talked about, but if you guys would back up, I asked him to come to our, either our town hall meeting, or have his own town hall meeting, and everybody here should come here and talk to him. He was, he's in charge, what he does, Freehold and Marla, he oversees the.
He's the finance for Freehold, the project manager.
Right, he oversees the taxation. And I talked to him about the tax assessor in this town, and I'm going to tell you a story. We have a brand-new website in town, beautiful, inviting, I love it. Is there any procedure as far as an email that's sent to a department? Do we have a procedure? Is it a town procedure?
Well, we do have policies and procedures going on with emails, yeah.
Does each head of department make their own policy?
No, the township has policies.
Okay, should email get answered in one day, two days, a week, a month?
There's no policy as to how long it takes to answer an email, no, I don't.
And it should get answered, or?
Well, if it's something that can be answered, yes, yeah, I mean, they should send, you know, thank you for your email, whatever, sometimes I personally ask for read receipts.
Oh, you answer me right away, and you're right to point, and I love that. That's why, you set the standard, and I'm, and I'm sitting here, and I'm like, hey, are you going to get the answer today, or tomorrow, or a week, a month, two months? Is, and I'll get to it, I'm going to get back to the email. But I went to the appeal meeting, and I can't really get into too much of that, because you know what's going on.
I did.
I asked the commissioner, I sat right at that table, while Brent sat at this table, I asked the commissioner if I could have about two minutes to explain the roadblocks that the township has put up for a resident to do anything with. And the question, he answered it. He said, no, Father. At that time, your tax assessor got tapped out. He left the meeting. Now, the only reason I would think that tax assessor would leave that meeting is because he's under oath. So when I started Mike's conversation, he was gone. On the end of my conversation, he came back. That's the kind of respect you get from that tax assessor to a resident. I asked the commissioner about emails, and I said to him, I had an email here, I wrote to the county, the county said, I have to write to the town. I wrote to the town. I'll give you the dates in a little bit, but I wrote to the town. Simple question, I was trying to help myself with an appeal, but God forbid you help yourself with an appeal. And here's the answer I got, Mark, would you please respond to this request, thank shouting. Okay, forwarding to me, forwarding to Mark, I'll give you the dates in a little bit. The commissioner said to me, give that to the table. So, of course, council looked at it, because Mark's no way to the town. Council looks at it, and he says to me, exact words, and I hope there was a recording of it, he says, if you think that he has time for this stuff, he is busy. Now, Mr. Kenness, you're in charge, oversee that department, he doesn't have a job, we hired this guy at salary again, right? So he gets paid salary if he's slow or if it's busy. So I was told by council, and that's why I'm here, otherwise I'd be down at the Ten Street Concerts. I was told by council. I was told by council that if I want this email answered, that I should come here to committee and ask you guys to give him more help because he's overworked. That's what I was told.
You told this by who?
By council, Michael Gilmore. Michael Gilmore was the only guy standing there. Because Mark left, he's under oath, he's not gonna answer any questions. He's gone. Okay, now let me give you the dates. This is the guy that you guys reappointed. And I talked to, like I said, I wanted to start talking. I wrote the date on, I wrote the email on the twenty-seventh of May. The email was sent to me on June third, June third, forward to tomorrow. Do you think I should have an answer by now? June third, I can give you the email.
Oh, I thought it was sent maybe since
It was sent to June third.
No, it still hasn't been sent.
It was sent to forward to May, I can use it, it's all yours. It's sent to the county? County, the answer would be right away. That's why I'm saying, go to county tax, get rid of this tax assessor, save over a million dollars, save the department. But nobody wants to listen to that, they're afraid of that. You, Mr. Kenneth, in charge of it, you think the guy has no help? You oversee it, you told me, you watched him interview somebody. That doesn't make any sense. The guy, the guy is overwhelmed, he's arrogant and
I can assure you that nobody's walked into his office thanking the first pass.
Here's what I don't get, you guys told me that. The reason that if somebody goes to his office, everybody brings a complaint. I tried to email, I tried to go around and ask the county the question, simple question. The reason I didn't get an answer, now I gotta go to his office and ask him. So you forced me into his office. Why did the man, and I used that word loosely, walk into the meeting? That is so disrespectful. That is so disrespectful.
Tony, did you ask him that when he came back in or?
No, because I didn't have a chance because, let me give you the other thing. Mr. Gilmore said to me, oh, you're beyond your two minutes. The man, lucky he had a watch because I was losing close to time. If the man had a watch, it would be nice that he uses it to get there in time. So we start a meeting at nine o'clock when he's supposed to. He comes walking in with his wallet. That's disrespectful. That's disrespectful. And Gary, you guys rehired him. And I'm telling you the truth, the guy has no clue. When you file an offer and the guy calls you on the phone to give me the answers, against the law. Against the law. I can't go into anymore because you know I filed the claim. Anybody here, if you wanna file with the state, file with the state. Because this guy is going over. And everybody should call Freeholder Barbara. Debbie is the secretary, she's super. Call him tomorrow. Flood his phone, tell me you want a meeting here. And as far as taxes and everything, nobody brings up how much money we get out of this power company.
What's the amount? Yeah, how much is it?
Yeah, ask them. They wanna talk about, oh, we give this much money here, this much here. We also, this money is incredible in this town. If you got a session right, if you guys got a session right, you wouldn't be here sitting with your taxes, you'd be happy with your little increase. When I sat here four months ago and said to everybody, get your houses assessed. And we have committee members that don't believe that's against, they don't believe that. That's against the law. You're wrong for doing the assessment, you're a bad person. You should be slapped.
That no should be paying our taxes.
That's what I'm saying, Tony, we never said don't file taxes.
Yes, you did. So one committee member on his, he'd say to me, yes, he did.
I'm sitting in this seat, I usually am the spokesperson for the governing body.
I, I, I will now, I can say, I don't know.
I made a comment about people filing tax appeals and the reason being, I asked you, you complained when that your tax assessment went up. And I asked you a question, you had to do. And you danced around the question, if you remember. Right, you remember, you danced around, I asked you and you wouldn't answer me.
Because you had
And I explained to you why I felt your assessment went back up because you, four years in a row, you filed tax appeals. So basically, your tax, your assessment went down, down, down while other residents had to make up for the difference. And that's what I said.
Mark, here's the part that I, that I, yeah, first of all, you have my information, they can go public. That's my information, will I repeal? Yes, it is. You, you
I'm not a fan of public, no, I didn't.
Yes, you did. I am, you also said, yeah, Mark, and you also said that no one on this committee ever filed an appeal. Do you still stand by that?
I believe.
You believe, you believe that everybody, no one on this committee
I asked, your fault, I asked.
Did anybody answer you?
Please.
Okay. Just so you stand, remember that.
I remember.
I'll use that, I'll use that down the road, I'll use that people that I'm talking to. That's what it is. You have that, that people are afraid to file an appeal. There's nothing wrong with filing, yeah.
Tony, I have never said it's not right to file.
And I say this, I said, personally committed.
And I've never filed a tax appeal, just so you understand.
And just so the people here understand, my house went up ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. And just so you know, this town's tax assessor, he did a dog and pony show in all of your houses. And he only did it for one reason. Because if you said no, you lost your appeal. He did a dog and pony show. They swore they went through my house, you can't do my house again.
He's arrogant, he's up. He is.
Hey, that's a start.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Yeah!
Let applause for you.
Oh, was it?
Jim, Lacey, Macy Township. Mayor, I'd like to follow up, I know recently the school board finally sat down with you and had a meeting. Did the school board conversation need to put the election back to April so the voters can go another way?
We spoke to the school board about that myself, our CFO, Linda Bell, was there, Brian was there, and the mayor, Ken was there. We worked out the school board and the school board has indicated that that's something that they're considering at the moment. They have not made final decisions on it. But at the end of the day, it's something we believe taxpayers want to see it. We believe in accountability of that test case and there's more of something. But we have not got the answer, that's the decision we're going to make.
Well, I understand that and just so people understand what I'm talking about. Four years ago, when Governor Christie signed the law to allow school board or county council to move the budget, uh, school elections to the November in order to save on the election, it took away your right to vote on the budget. Four years statute has expired where either the school board and I've asked numerous members there to reinstate back the April meeting, uh, April election. The law allows this governing body or the law allows a petition for a referendum on the ballot. And I understand why the school board could drag their feet because tomorrow's the deadline for you to put a referendum on the ballot. So since the school board is unwilling to obviously take the action because we're talking about twenty thousand out of the seventy-five million dollar budget they have. It's not a lot of money for a lot of people to vote on the budget. And the purpose of voting on the budget is to keep the school board in check. As you know, and I'll say this, I'm not asking you to say it, but the conversations have been here with former school board members. When they took the bond referendum out for the nineteen point eight million dollars for the solar panels. They borrowed eight point two million more than the project came in for, paid the architect for the full nineteen point eight million. And the first interest that will be collected by the found in bonds paid off is another eight and a half million dollars. So if people understand where the tax money are going, that was one of the reasons that I really would urge this council to consider. And I know it's gonna come to your head, but tomorrow is the deadline. If you don't ask the county clerk to put a referendum on the ballot, we'll have to wait till next year. Or January third, when we get some new blood on the board. So I know it's a tough night to talk about this, but I think it has to be done because you have a school board that has not been responsive to the people. They use the excess eighteen, eight point two million dollars, and I'll say, to artificially offset the costs for the last four years in that school. And instead of putting that money towards not hard in the first place. But the other problem is they put those solar panels on a roof that, when I was on the school board, was put on in nineteen ninety-four. It's a twenty-year roof. The roof is leaking in the high school, middle school, old middle school. And there's no money to remove those panels and repair those roofs. And so with a twenty-year-old roof that's leaking, they're gonna have to go out and bond more money to remove the panels, rebuild the roof and reinstall the panels. Now, the main, same time, Central Regional went to apply lease option with a solar company. They didn't bond any money, they got a convenient reduction in their electric and immediate savings. And they have an option that after fifteen years, they can buy the panels, which anybody knows solar panels after fifteen years is rated to the point they're not beneficial. So here you have two neighboring school districts. One took no bond money, we got instant savings. And at the last meeting, the attorney for the board tried to explain how beneficial the panels are saving taxpayers hundreds of dollars a year. Well, I'm looking at all the numbers and I can tell you the cost of the interest, the cost of the loan. We're not saving anything on those panels. So again, the options for five years, I hate to put it down to spot. But I would hope that you consider, at least put the question on the ballot for the voters to vote.
Do that.
Yeah, I think that, I don't think that comes, must have come from either voters or the school district, it's either voters or
Voters, the voters have a right to do it as well and that's why the deadline is April twenty, uh, August twenty-eighth.
Yeah, twenty-eighth, but
Not enough time.
The fourteenth is the deadline for municipal and county governments to file requests with the county clerk to have a public question appear on the November ballot.
And then there's the August twenty-eighth is one deadline for submission of a public question proposed by the voters to be submitted to the county, right? You have to do
You have to do a petition and have a certain number of But the way the law reads is, the school board can immediately vote to remove the election back to April. This governing body can vote to move it to April. Now you have two competing public bodies. Or at least, this committee has the right to allow questions to be put on the ballot for a public program. And in this way, the voters decide.
Seems fair.
Yes, it seems fair.
I know it's a tough situation, but we can't go to another election cycle with this because the current budget, the school system, which most people don't realize, if you look at the apple, is over seventy-five million dollars. There's roughly a hundred students more than when I was last on a school board back in the nineties. And in eighteen years, that budget went from thirty-six million to seventy-five million. So something has to be done. And I just ask that you consider.
And I'm sorry, you said the enrollments declined?
Jim? The enrollment
It's declined.
The enrollment has gone down because what happened back in ninety-three, we had a very large first grade enrollment which would take twelve years to filter out of the district. The enrollment is roughly forty-two hundred students. When I left the board, it was forty-one hundred students and a difference from thirty-six million to seventy-five million dollars.
We got Mike on here.
Can you put
My name's Gary Nadie, eighteen home work. We've met, I met you, Matt, and I met Ken. As a board member, you know, I'm delighted to say that we have forged a pretty good working relationship with the committee, the township. As a resident though, I've gotta say, I'm real disappointed in the way the whole property tax thing went down. I was the one that organized this mass appeal and I don't know exactly how it's going to turn out. The judgments are being mailed out tomorrow and as a matter of fact, for all receivers. So it remains to be seen whether we will see any relief. The fact of the matter is, we've heard a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of talk. I've heard about someone who's won four tax appeals. It sounds very subjective to me. And frankly, it's not supposed to be objective. Our taxes are supposed to be based on a fair market value of our home, okay? And if someone has won appeal this year, next year, the following year. It's because there is empirical data to support the comparables that say his home is worthless. It's pretty cut and dry, you know? And although I don't expect anyone sitting up there right now to agree with me. We all know that new home sales do not translate dollar for dollar to fair market value. And the tax assessor, and I sat here too that day, sat, sat right there. And the only data he had was new home sales, we told. Now, as a board member, I'm pretty intimate with a lot of folks' stuff going on. And I know for a fact that there have been homes for sale longer than a year in our community that are far below, that are listed far below what they have, what they bought the home at. And they haven't even received an offer, not one offer, okay? Now, again, I don't know exactly what kind of relief we're going to get. I hope we get some relief. But I guarantee you, we're not going away. All we want is our fair chunk to pay. That's all we're looking for. We all moved here and frankly, we've all spent pretty much our whole lives in New Jersey. We understand property taxes. We understand it as well as anyone who could have lived here all our lives, okay? We wanna pay what's fair and equitable, what's fair and reasonable. And it's not fair and reasonable. The assessments that were done were egregiously increased, okay? We're not talking about a few thousand dollars. We're talking about fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars. We've only been there for five years. How is that possible? It's not possible. And the commissioner sat, at least on July second, the commissioner says, well, if you paid five hundred thousand dollars for your home a year later, you sold it, don't you think it's worth five hundred? Uh, no, it isn't. It isn't because I paid to move windows, I paid to move walls. I paid for a lot of surreptitious things that somebody coming to look at the house didn't care less whether I did that. And we all have done that. We've all been down this way before, okay? So, you know, we've gotta think long and hard because this is a pervasive problem here. I see a lot of angst, I see a lot of anger here. I see my fellow neighbors here that they're not happy and I'm not happy either. Because what I see right now, if we don't get any relief from these judgments, that our single year tax increases are anywhere from twenty to sixty percent were being hit. We may be an affluent community, but we are not one percenters, okay? We are not one percenters. Maybe not even five percenters or ten percenters, I don't know. All we wanna pay is our fair and reasonable money and that's it. So, you know, you folks are, you folks are imbued with the authority and the responsibility to be able to help the citizens of our township here, okay? You know, the tax assessor may be autonomous, but you know what? If I was the mayor and I got in a room with him, he'd be a little less autonomous.
Hey Gary, can you ask us all to stand up? Everybody stand up.
Yeah!
We're here. We need your help.
We need your help. You have to understand where we're coming from. We just wanna pay our fair share, that's all. And, and, you know, I'm an objective person, you know? If something is factual and they can support it, then it is what it is. And I move, I move on with my life. But when I put this class action appeal together, which really isn't a class action appeal. But ostensibly, that's what it, that's what it was meant to be. And next year, we're going to have over two hundred home sales. And I promise you that we will make it our mission to make it right, Gary. And, and, yeah, and believe me, that's not a threat. I'm a board member, I've worked with you. Veronica has been great in giving us reimbursements and everything. Life has been good until the tax laws come out. And now all of a sudden, I've got an extra sixteen hundred dollars I gotta come up with this year. Can I do it? Yeah, I can do it. Should I have to do it? That's a different story. That's a different story. It doesn't matter whether I can financially do it. It's what's fair and reasonable to us. And right now, there's not a lot of that going around. So we gotta figure it out. You know, we all know that it seems like school taxes are inviolable. Nobody can touch school taxes. Well, I gotta tell you, somebody's gotta get creative here. You know, I don't know if it's when you reach age sixty-two or sixty-five. There's gotta be some sort of a credit system that hopefully in my lifetime, I'll see where, where people who have absolutely no consumption of the resources of the town can get some benefit from that. I mean, come on. It just, you gotta get creative here.
I wanna make two points.
Sure.
In fact, for the longest period of time, you know, I've been here my whole life, that a house on the water, we're selling everything we desire. There's cops coming out and told us There's comps coming out, Toll Brothers, you know, that are high.
Speak up.
There are comps coming out of, in years past, the water community grows the most desirable and the most expensive in town with highest success. There's comps coming out from Toll Brothers now. People to where you can get on the water now.
But you're ignoring like just.
I'm not the sale great. That's where it starts. Yeah, that's where the assessor starts. I'm not saying it's totally fair, but the other part of selling into a community like yours, there's four Hamptonshire Way closed for five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's a whole lot of money.
Yes.
Toll Brothers knows that, if that person says try and sell that house today, they're not going to get five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. Toll Brothers will market a house much lower than if they're trying to get that. So if you were going to Toll Brothers now, and you weren't there before, and you had a house for five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars for sale, or a new Toll Brothers house that you customize yourself, you're not going to buy the five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar house. So that's, so, but the assessor is using, I imagine, I have to educate myself a little bit more. But he's looking at a lot of these deeds that are coming. I'm not saying it's fair, but that's, that's part of the math that goes into it. He looks at the deeds now.
That's the law. Not why.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's fair. I'm just, I'm pointing it out. I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's.
We understand that. We get that.
So you got to wait for the.
Let's hear him out. He listened to me. Let's, let's hear him.
That's all I'm pointing at. That's how I, I have to educate myself more on how he does that. I'm not saying it's exactly fair. That's what he looks at when he does.
Right. But please understand, it's not up to us to balance the budget. Okay? That's why you folks have, have thrown your towels and you get elected to make leadership type decisions. As, as a resident here, you know, it's not my job for me to balance the budget. It's my job to make sure that I pay the correct amount of money to the township. And yes, Sandy took out a lot of waterfront homes. They're devalued now. I hear you. I don't know that I've got the answer to that stuff either. I only know, I only know that the assessments in Seabreeze were egregiously increased. Okay? There is just no justification. There's no empirical data to support it unless you just sit there and say, well, this deed price is five hundred fifty thousand. And I only assessed you at four seventy-five. You should be happy. You should be lunch. It's not the way it works. It's not the way it works. Because we know that's not true. We've got a half a dozen homes for sale of, you know, in Seabreeze or more, quite frankly. You know? And every one of those homes on indebted price are well into the four hundred thousand. They've been sold at three eighty, three sixty. And you can't say that they're fire sales. They're not being sold short. They're just, that's what the market is right now. And, and Mayor, I'm not so sure I agree with you that, that being in a gated community raises the value a little bit. The demographic is fifty-five and older. We live, we, there's a whole segment of the population that can't buy in our development, which actually devalues our homes. Because you can't get that twenty-five-year-old who might have an inheritance to come in and buy a half a million dollar home. He's not allowed to live there. The demographic is fifty-five and older. That does not add value. It attracts value. Okay? Of course, you just don't have as large a demographic to be able to sell your homes. It makes it more difficult.
It attracts a different group of people. It's, it's, if you had that twenty-five-year-old there, a lot of folks don't want to live there. Those kids, those different variables.
Yeah, exactly.
You do have, like, a gated community always has a lot of tremendous difference.
Right.
A lot of people are without you. Well, it's one thing I just want to make comment on with your advice to the school tax. I mean, we all, we all have heard that many years. I'm not sure.
Man, I don't know that anyone tries to attack it, quite frankly.
But that's something that, you know, I mean, having your folks come out is great. Your voice and your opinion, you're hearing from you. But you have to take that fight on to the legislation. Senator Condes in town, Brian's in town. I mean, their offices are here. Just like the school tax, you have to get some of your folks to show up at the school. You know, we're the, you know, one stop shop here. And we'll take whatever we have to deal with and try and deal with it. But it's not us that controls it all. And I think if the state of New Jersey, and I agree a hundred percent on that, ever came up with a system similar to what Pennsylvania, somebody, the state's ground is on, it would be a better system.
Absolutely. Give us a chance to vote on this. But you know what?
On what?
Give the chance to vote. Make that final application. But, but you know what? You, you folks are much more networked than we are. You know a lot more people.
And we're accessible. I understand.
And, and I know you may not have the ultimate authority to do it. But I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I expect you guys to put your heads together and try and figure out something, whether it's doable or not. At least put something on paper. Put something down that we can test. We can pilot test or do something to. You know? I, I got to tell you, you know, I, I've spent a whole career with a simple thing, you know? Failure is, is unacceptable. Okay? You know, I, I built and fielded weapon systems in my career. All right? And there was no, I can't do kind of stuff. If a soldier needed it, I put, I put what he needed there, whether it was lethal or non-lethal, to take care of the mission that they had. End of story. And that, and you know what? That's where we are right now. This is only, this is just a fraction, a small fraction of what we've got out there. You know, it's, it's a very small fraction of the, of the folks that are angry out there. And they shouldn't be angry at you. I'm with you on that. Okay? I want an amenable relationship, quite frankly. As a board member, I want to be able to bounce things off you. You come to us. That's the way it's supposed to work. Collaboration, compromise. That's the two things to success. So.
Teen more. Teen more.
Right.
Lorraine Sandstone, Laurel and Gore Garden. Okay, let me take a few breaths.
Is it there?
No, I'm okay for now. I cannot talk about my tax appeal. Because as an American citizen, a citizen of Wasey Township, I filed an appeal with local taxpayer. And today, I'm very happy to say, I filed my appeal with the state. Because I'm not going to take this sitting now. Okay? I've lived in Wasey almost forty years. And I've been to a lot of township committee meetings. A lot. I've been here when township committee has voted to put a question on the ballot the night before the deadline. I don't understand. You have the power. You can do it. You can put this question on the ballot, which clearly everybody wants to see.
Right.
Yes.
And if I may, through the chair, may I call the committee members to see how they feel about getting the school budget question back on the ballot? May I, Mr. Chairman?
You, you know, I mean, you can ask the question. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a poll, but it's up to them.
Well, that's the kind of which I was told to use out of my forty years of experience.
Yeah, it would be up to the individual committee member.
Mr. Gilmore taught me well. Ask it through the chair.
Right, but it would be up to the committee member to make.
They can say anything they want.
Yeah, or they don't have to answer. But I just wanted.
You don't have to answer. Mr. Cardog.
Yes, uh, if people.
Would you be in favor of putting it on the ballot tonight?
I will absolutely answer the question. If people recall, long before I knew this meeting was going to take place, I interviewed on the Lees Report, our recreation director, because I think, and I'm hoping that that starts a trend. I want for our residents who make commute up to New York City or live in a retirement community, I am for open and honest and accessible government all the time. I work for the government. I'm one of the people, my taxes went up substantially. Okay? So anything that will help the people understand the government better, have more access to government, see government more clearly, and if that means putting in a budget for question for referendum, that helps people understand it and read it better, and if that's what they want, I would support it.
I keep hearing in political campaign after political campaign, let's take our government back. I truly believe that the township committee, the local government, is the purest form of citizen involvement. So if that is indeed true, you have an opportunity to help us tonight, take our government back. Mr. Giuliano, may I ask you?
Yes, you can. Um, if that's what the people want to see, that's why I, that's what I ran on. That's what I believe in. I, I work for the people of this town. Um, yes, I would.
Good. May I ask you the same question?
Mayor Clinton, Deputy Mayor, I, um, I had been in favor of moving it back to April. I'd had discussions with members of the school board as well as Superintendent Brown. And it was my, I, I was waiting for them to make a decision. And I thought they, um, they wanted it. But I would be in favor of bringing a referendum.
Excellent.
For those that have been here in town lineup, there's been a lot of animosity between the township and the school board. So just recently, we started thawing the, the mayor and I've been meeting quarterly with them to try and address different issues that we have all had. Mostly, the last meeting we had, they indicated, we talked about putting the budget, uh, budget back on the April ballot, which it never should have came off of. But they sort of wanted us to stay out of it. Both would stay out of it. We should stay out of the week. But I'm grudgingly saying that it should be back on the ballot, but it would be better off to wait here. But I would say yes, but it should wait here.
Would you go for it tonight, if I may ask?
Somebody made a resolution to pass it.
So we need a motion and a good attorney so far, because I counted four votes. We only need three.
Gary doesn't count.
I haven't gotten to Mr. Quinn yet. Mr. Quinn, I've known you for a long time.
And we've been in a lot of meetings, you know?
Yes, we have.
In the same exact position.
Exactly. Like, but I have been through this. Mr. Gilmore, I've seen him write the question. Right here. It's doable. You have the power. We need to take it back. Mr. Quinn, what's your answer?
Anybody that knows my relationship over the years with the school to know, I'm not the fair-haired child of the school board. So without a doubt, there's no doubt in my mind, I would support it.
Start drafting.
I just wanted that people understand that during the conversations Stephen and I did have at the schools, you know, it was brought up about doing this and having it done at our, our level of government. I, I think it's something that the majority of school members that are in the province basically.
And if they ask, say the people overruled it.
That's right.
To make a clearance, the school board was trying to get, they are to ignore.
I know that. But not how willing to raise another.
They were, they were, they wanted to put it back, but they wanted to do it under their own volition.
Well, they're the problem.
We drove the wagon.
May I respectfully request of the mayor as chair, would you ask the township attorney to draft a question, take a break, draft a question, and have the committee vote on it right here tonight while we're here?
One comment before I do that.
Yes.
I just want the public to recognize that I will do it. I will ask for a motion to take and put it on the ballot to meet tomorrow's deadline.
Yes.
We will go into executive session very shortly to have the question written by our attorney. But I want the public to understand that it's non-binding coming, you know, from a referendum. The schools still have the ability to vote, to change the decision. But that goes to that level of government, not this.
But it's a step forward, one step at a time.
I agree. I understand.
Okay, I give you permission to go into private session. And one more thing, you guys will be asked, that everybody who has the torch in a seat tonight, don't leave until they draft the question and blow on. You matter.
We're just going to finish up public comment before we go ahead with the question.
Gary, keep in mind, when I was at the school board meeting, when they did go to the November elections, it also extended their time in office to November. So we can put it back.
It would all reverse with the election. Yeah, yeah. Anyone else like to speak?
So close. I'm going to change the subject a little bit.
Geese?
Well, at least I got a laugh. Well, not only the geese, just the general condition of the lake now. Uh, as you know, last meeting, I brought you some signatures on the petition. And I have a few more here to give you that I didn't even go out and get. They just came from me.
Okay.
So let me do these. And let me just, let me just comment on this, for the first time this year, I've seen somebody work on the beach this morning. They put the bulldozers out and they hurried to do school. And that afternoon, I saw Jim and one of the guards come with a couple of shovels and they did a little shoveling along the edge. And they did a little attempt, at least, to try to make it look decent. Uh, it's kind of a lost cause. I've almost given up on this, but I'm going to beat this dead horse until I'm dead. I don't know whether these people here know, but I guess I've been fighting for the lake for four years. Most of you people have been living down here. That lake was once a thing of real beauty. And I got quite a shock this past Saturday. We had a party on my deck, which was on the lake. And my kids were all there, all five of them. And they came to me and said, Dad, how come there's nobody on the beach? When we grew up, there was laughter. There were kids. There were people. They enjoyed it. We enjoyed it. I taught them to swim in that lake. In the time they were kids. I taught my grandkids to swim in that lake. Now, I wouldn't dare put them in. There are rafts of grass growing all over it now. Oh, and this they also did for the first time since the lake was raised from the wintertime drop. There were logs and things hanging over the edge. This time, there was grass rafts and those logs. Jim had one of the boys take a kayak, go down there and dump all the stuff over. And it looks a lot better. Although I often wonder, whose responsibility is it to clean that spillway? Because it's full of garbage, you know? Not garbage, but logs, grass.
Stuff, everything else.
It's overflowed. Because that does not make it nice or doesn't make it smell good. I'm not going to say too much tonight. I don't think you're interested in hearing too much about the lake.
I'm really interested.
Whose responsibility is it?
The, the lake itself is public works. And I'll have public works in a part of the local area if there's any, you know, littering in the spillways. So for those of you that are not aware of this issue, a number of years back, we were mandated by state New Jersey DDP to take and build a dam out on, in that area because they wanted the, all the way through the lake to be changed. Unfortunately, in our opinion and the opinion of our professionals, building that dam has taken and slowed down the process of the waterfall coming to the lake.
Oh, sure.
And created a tremendous amount of problems in the lake itself of vegetation. Add to that, that the, you know, Canadian geese have taken that up as their number one residence throughout Ocean County. And Idaho has been fighting, trying to get rid of the geese for a number of years now. A number of years back, we had a situation where we were trying to find a way to solve the problem. And the government body had made a decision to take and have the geese grounded up, caught and euthanized. We showed up and meeting one night, we had probably over a thousand people here with signs to use. with signs to euthanize the geese. Yeah, yeah.
We had no...
Nobody's still getting home now. But it's an iron lung problem that we're trying to, and for whatever reason, it just seemed to target that one area of town.
Very much so. We have more geese on the lake this year than we've ever had. But the yachting of the eggs was more successful this year. So, the geese are actually coming from around the area into the lake.
Yeah, we don't know why we can't stop them, but we're not alone. Other areas throughout Ocean County, the Ocean Bar system, they have the same problem. There's different ideas out there that voting, trying to make it work. But as of now, we don't have a solution to how to get rid of these geese other than put them on a plane and fly back up Canada.
We should send Canada to build.
Yeah.
I think you lost strength in the lake, and we should, in our local...
Yeah, yeah.
I hope that's not the future that's gonna be for this relationship.
That won't be on the table.
Yeah. I was hurt very much. It's true. That's why it hurts for the people. Because I don't think that lake should be closed. If you wanted to save the money and not get the guards on, not do anything, just reopen and put, swim at your own risk, not tested, not, you know...
The only problem with that is because of our requirements with the GIP, which is our insurance category throughout county, we have specific regulations that it has to be closed during the climate and the other pieces are open, since we don't have guards there. So, the gates are closed during the day. We're directing people to the middle lake. And then we reopen those gates later on in the afternoon.
I mean, this, even when it opens later in the afternoon, nobody comes for a simple reason. It's not fit to be on.
Yeah, I actually went by the other day. I saw some kids in the water, you know, playing those games where you throw them in there. So, you know, there is some people using them, but by no means is it getting the use that it should get for the beautiful, you know, lake that was.
It was. It was. In fact, I found a little booklet, not from this year, from last year.
Yeah.
Okay, it was in the paper about Lacey Township. That still shows that lake in people's eyes. This year, it isn't even mentioned in the booklet. And I have been fighting for this lake, and I guess all you know, as a lone human mayor.
Yeah.
And I was fighting before that.
Oh, no, believe I don't. I know what you're saying.
And to me, to have a, something that is so beautiful and is such an asset to the township, be abandoned and let go to nothing. And it won't take long. This year, this year tells me how quick it's gonna come. Another two years, and the mill pond will look good compared to it. Now, I think it was a bad mistake to let the mill pond go. And I catch when I started to bite. And to have our lake go like that means that all three will go. Because the mill pond is downstream from the main bathing beach. So, any pollution or anything that happened there just went down Fork River out into the bay.
Let me, if I can, Mr. Zellford, this is the largest, since I've been elected to this body, and I don't welcome all our residents here again, this is the largest group I've seen of our residents. And I just wanna let people know, and Mr. Zell and I have spoken in the past in public here at a meeting and television. The Ocean County Health Department tests weekly, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, every recreational body of water in this county, fresh and salt. And those parameters, they're done, I work there at the county health department. Those parameters are spelled out on, you can click on a municipality or a body of water. You'll see the test. The testing is done as of our last public caucus meeting. There has not been a lake in Lacey Township that was closed. Between that and now, I'm not sure. But it's tested for fecal coliform, because the geese have, are so regular, I guess for lack of a better word. They eat a lot of the greens and things work through the goose. But kidding aside, I want our residents to know, no matter how many times a resident may frequent the lake, that lake is tested. I see those people going out with their test kits from our building on Sunset Avenue in Tom's River to those lakes. Those results of those tests, and the amount per colony of fecal coliform is posted on our website, ochd.org. So, it's free. It's there for anyone to see. You're talking about different issues. You're talking about the dam, the mandated dam, and some of the green grass growing. I'm talking about the water quality. And I want our residents to be safe, rest assured. That water is tested. That water is safe. If it fails, and if fecal coliform comes back too high, those readings come back too high, that lake is closed. To the best of my knowledge, right here tonight, it hasn't been closed. And it has been closed fewer and fewer times, year over year, from 2012, 13, 14 to today.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if our lake, Deerhead Lake,
Yes.
goes the way of the mill ponds, all the water from Deerhead Lake feeds Lake Farnigan. How much longer will it be before Lake Farnigan starts to look like Deerhead Lake?
Lake Farnigan is a different situation from the lake. I mean, we don't know, we believe it's because of great reference in place over there where the water comes out of Deerhead and flows through the woods down to Lake Farnigan. It's cleaning that water, because the water, you know, we don't have any issues whatsoever with the water in Lake Farnigan. But add to that the fact that we've had dispositions from the county over the last couple of years, and redoing all the roadways around there, and the catch basins, which use to feed into the lake itself and bring all the garbage that will feed into the catch basin to the lake, that has cleaned up Lake Farnigan tremendously. We have to find a way to be able to take grant money, to be able to take and put the initial drainage system in along the perimeter of Deerhead Lake. Because everything from Lacey Road basically goes downhill. Whether it's a parish, and then all the streets flow downhill to feed into that lake. So, in addition to the geese, the contaminants coming over the roadways, fertilization on people's wounds, all these things are factors to the end of that problem. So, we have that in the process, trying to get the grant money available for that. But we haven't been successful yet.
I know. It's been, how many years you've told me we're working on it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, government is not exactly moving quick, I'll tell you that. This is, this thing we're gonna do right now is probably the quickest I've ever seen government move. Thanks, Adam. Any other public comments?
We have the attorney.
Motion, motion for a court, second.
See what she does.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for a motion to pass a resolution in the town of Lacey for the following question. And this will be a wording as it goes on the ballot if the resolution passes. Should the town of Lacey school board elections be moved from the general election in November to the third Tuesday in April? Do you have a motion?
Second. Vocal?
Mr. Cass? Mr. Giuliano? Mr. Bertola?
Yes.
Mr. Beckhoff?
Yes.
Nick Wetch?
Yes.
All staff will go out tomorrow morning to notification to the county clerk's office. So, we meet the time required. We're teaming these with all your friends, get them together, bring them to the school board meeting next Tuesday. And we should have best. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to, you know, try and get more information on the tax assessment, bring that stuff in, you know, whatever you can bring in.
I can give it.
Yeah, but, you know, we appreciate you coming out, believe you, we're listening. You know, we're trying to do everything we can to, you know. Our hands are over there.